Okay, I'll begin the City Council Special Meeting and Work Session. Stage eight, two thousand twenty-one. Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
First item is our consent agenda for a set of meeting minutes. Have any concerns about those minutes?
No.
Okay. Motion then to.
To approve the consent agenda. Is that fine, Sam? Do we need to list off all?
That'll work.
Okay, great.
Seconded, seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thanks, Jennifer, for all those minutes and all that work. I'm going to start us off before we jump into our public comment. I have a comment of my own or an assortment of comments. These are considering some recent correspondences that we've had. First, there is some question about the creation of signs, the pandemic signs that we had early in the response last year. It was involved, I was personally involved in a meeting where the signs were discussed. Myself, city manager, emergency manager, and the police chief had a meeting about how to interact. In that discussion, we just, we talked about getting the signs going as soon as possible. I also understood at that moment that we were under an emergency declaration. And it was fully in the purview of the city manager to act on the signs as he saw fit. That's just to let you know that the process has a lot more to it than what has been commented on in some of the correspondences. This has also led to some strange implications that a staff member has functioned unethically and many unfounded claims are being spread around. I ask, as the mayor, before anyone supports an accusation, that you get all the information pertaining to the issue being called out. This is also now leading to concerns about changes in staffing and city employee management. City Council does not supervise the daily operations or oversee employees. We are not privy to employment matters until there is a cause to do so. And when that is done, it is in an executive session for specifically the privacy of the employee that is involved. It is in direct discussion with the city manager, legal counsel, and in some cases, outside human resources consultants. Without going into specifics, the city council takes disciplinary act decisions very seriously. I have been involved in more than I care to. As a unionized government employer, decisions about employment discipline involve multiple layers of review. There are opportunities for the employee to respond to allegations as there is opportunity for the management to address concerns. Though the city manager makes the final decision, it is the council role to oversee just the city manager. In that, he keeps a surprise of actions before they are taken. There are many reasons why an employer may decide to enter into a separation agreement with employee. Severance agreements give employees a choice between settlements or litigation or union grievances. Severance may have an apparent implication as a payoff is not. It is part of doing business, as is litigation, as is working with the unions. So much so that our insurance provider is also often involved. I ask again, before any resident takes an accusation or repeats one, do your homework and gather all relevant information. We, the city council, and I hope they are supportive of what I'm saying, are attentive to how the city functions. We are concerned about any valid complaint over staff and operations. We do, though, support all city employees, will listen to their side of any issue in the confidence their employment and the union allows. I am proud of all the city staff and I respect their being part of the city family. Thank you. That's my statement. Bruce, did you have a statement you wanted to make?
I'd like to wait until the statement you made.
Okay. With that, I will open the public comments. And we have three folks who have signed up. So Susan Newworth. Find her resting, please. We will. For the speed.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Okay, and thank you all. I think, Sam, you've addressed some of the issues that I mentioned in my letter. Of course, I have a, I have some personal interest in what's been going on most recently. And I try to keep that out of it because my concerns started way before current events. And having heard firsthand what a lot of the things that have gone on, I can't help but feel that there's been some abuse of power. And I just wanted to voice it, air it. And as a citizen and, and someone who cares about the community very much, I just wanted to tell you my concerns. That's all. And again, I appreciate your consideration of them. You obviously gave it a lot of thought, Sam, in your, in your comments. And that's it.
Thank you, Sue. I appreciate your letter, too. Thank you. Next, I believe we have Rusty Morris. Rusty, her Rusty.
Hello?
Hello, Rusty, we hear you.
Good evening. My name is Rusty Morris. I have filed multiple complaints with the Oregon Ethics Commission against Karen Labonte. The commission opened a full-scale investigation on April thirtieth. The investigation is still ongoing. My original complaint detailed conflict of interest that resulted in financial benefit to Karen Labonte and her husband's design business. The city of Cannon Beach has awarded all design work to Cannon Beach Design since Karen Labonte was hired as the Public Works Director. I asked the mayor and city council to investigate whether these contracts were permitted, went through design review, and opened bidding before being awarded. If not, why not? I asked the city manager or the council to put Karen Labonte on administrative leave while the investigation is ongoing. The taxpayers in this community deserve an explanation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And last, I believe we have Jan Seibert-Warman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, Jan.
Hi. Hi, I'm Jan Seibert-Warman, and I also am writing this, these two letters, very short letters, with my husband Wes Warman, P O Box seven seven eight, Cannon Beach, Oregon, nine seven one one zero. Dear Mayor, City Councilors, and City Staff, it seems like over the past few years, even during the pandemic, we as a community have been pressured to speed up faster and faster to quote "modernize" end quote Cannon Beach. What are we really doing in this regard? Are we really a better community for all this? Are our workers, our residents, our neighborhoods really better off for all we've been doing? Many of us came here to slow down, to simplify our lives, to live quote "at the beach" end quote. But can we ask ourselves, what are we turning into? Or what are we enabling our town to become? A place that is as hectic and fast-paced as the places we left? Is that really what we desire? We would say no. Please reread our Cannon Beach comprehensive plan. Village character is not just about how things look, although that is very, very important. Village character is also about how we treat one another and how we work together with our neighbors. It's protecting those special places that hold a magic that cannot be replaced once it's gone. Our vision is being lost in the rush to develop and update our community. Can we all please take a breath, slow down, and think about why we came here in the first place? Thank you. And the next letter is even more brief. Dear Mayor, City Councilors, and City Staff, we'd like to put in a good word for Sean Cole of the Cannon Beach Public Works Department. Sean has always, in our experience, been most helpful, courteous, creative, environmentally respectful, and efficient in everything he's done. It is our hope that any possible issue regarding Sean will be positively handled with all sides heard and that Sean will continue to be a much appreciated employee in the Cannon Beach Public Works Department for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Okay, that's everybody who signed up.
Yeah, if I can, Sam, part of your comment was that people take the time to get the information as far as what, you know, occurred in these situations to make their decisions. And I do have some information on, on some of these things. The ethics complaint that was referenced by Mr. Morris dealt with signs that were installed as a result of a meeting that you all held on March twenty-second. He said that we were going to close the town to visitors. And at that time, or once we left, I went to Karen Labonte and told her to have the signs made. I told her specifically what the signs were supposed to say. Anyway, those were the ones that said Cannon Beach closed to visitors. And to move forward with Cannon Beach Design. Cannon Beach Design is a company that is run by her husband. And I knew that when it occurred. Ms. Labonte, for a long time, had taken the position that there was a potential conflict there. We had changed our procedures to where Ms. Labonte was not normally associated with any dealings with signs. And in this particular case, I did tell her, get the signs done, get them done right away. But in the way that the, the complaint was written or submitted by Mr. Morris was that there were procedures that were, were dismissed. It didn't go through D R B. Well, we never go through D R B. There is no committee that does purchasing. We'd never have had that. But in addition, that day, you adopted resolution two thousand, or two thousand, two twenty oh nine. And in that, you said that the normal procedures would be waived for the city manager to be able to do things associated with COVID. So that's what happened that day. I gave her specific direction. She did not contact her husband based on, you know, an ability to provide work. I said, call him, get the signs in. In doing that, I was quite surprised that we did that on a Sunday. And by Monday morning, there were signs at every one of the entrances to the city. And so that information was submitted to the Ethics Commission. But the, the way that the complaint was framed was not, was not accurate. And just gave you what happened with it, and it was based on the actions of two thousand two, I'm sorry, two twenty, twenty twenty dot oh nine. But in the discussion with the Ethics Commission, we understand that there is the potential for a technical violation. And that she did not send the city manager a written note stating there was a potential ethics violation because the city was dealing with her husband's company, even though it was done totally in my direction. That is a, a technical issue. And if you remember, that was the day that we were, had made a decision to close the town. We were talking about getting the signs done. There was no decision she was making. She was not involved in the process. But potentially technically, there might be that, that technical violation. They're still looking into that. If the written notice finding is determined to be an issue, it is a minor technical violation, which does not involve Karen doing anything that could even remotely be considered unethical, as we all use and understand that term. And as far as the, the staff issues, I think that some things have been attributed to department heads. And the fact is, the city manager and only the city manager makes the final decision on disciplinary matters. That happens after an independent investigation. A predetermination letter is provided to the employee. After that, there's an appeal meeting with the employee where they can be represented by the union themselves or legal counsel. Following that, we have consultation with the city's legal counsel and the insurance provider's legal team, who review the case for, on the city's liability. Sam talked a little bit about settlement payments. The reason the insurance company is involved is that they pay a significant portion of any settlement, as well as the cost to defend the city, should a lawsuit arise. So it's in their interest to make sure the city has followed all appropriate laws and practices before any disciplinary action is taken. Incidentally, the city always recommends that the employees seek counsel from family members and their attorney before signing the settlement agreement. So there have been cases where individuals are no longer with the city. We went through those cases under all of this scrutiny and the scrutiny that Sam mentioned, you know, being a union city and all that. And we do have the files. And somebody can get a waiver from the individuals that were involved. They can see the copy of the disciplinary file. But in every case, I think the employees were given every opportunity to succeed and just made choices that put them in a position that they're no longer with the city. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Bruce. Okay, with that, we will close the public comment and move to our first hearing. Is consider as consideration of Resolution twenty-one nineteen for the purpose of declaring the city's election to receive state revenues for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. All right.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, so we have a couple major items tonight on the agenda. The first one is consideration of Resolution twenty-one nineteen for the purpose of declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
All right, excuse me. Let me just add here for Ashley's sake. At this time pursuant to O R S two two one point seven seven zero point one. I guess that's important. Thank you.
Have you opened the public hearing?
Was that for opening it? No, that's for your, no, that's just for your staff report.
Staff report, okay. All right, um, so Oregon state law requires us to officially formally adopt a resolution. That means we will elect to receive state revenues. As you all know, through the budget process, we discussed this in Budget Committee as well, where we were supposed to have a hearing, as we did. So we've been over the types of revenues that are funded by the state, shared revenues. Eighteen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars is estimated to be received in the general fund. And that's for the purpose of funding those programs that are in the general fund. And then the other one is the fuel tax, the highway fund, gas taxes. Those are dedicated to roads. And we're estimating one hundred thirty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars to be used for the purpose of road operations. So staff, well, once we close the public hearing, staff is recommending that council adopt Resolution twenty-one nineteen that will allow us to accept those revenue sources.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public wishing to comment on the proposed use of state revenue sharing for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two? We need to see the attendees, in case.
And I received no request to speak on that.
Okay. At that, I will. Close the public hearing at this time. I made a motion then.
I move to approve Resolution number twenty-one nineteen for the purpose of declaring the city's election to receive state revenues for fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two.
Second. Counselor Obobie?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel President Bennefield?
Yes.
Counsel Rizley?
Yes.
Mayor Stoudt.
Yes.
Okay. Now, we're going to do the final budget. So at this time pursuant to O R S two nine four four five three, I will open the public hearing in order to give the citizens of Cannon Beach the opportunity to comment on the budget approved by the city of Cannon Beach Budget Committee for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. All right, staff report.
The second big item is adopting our budget for next year. We do that by considering the Resolution number twenty-one twenty, which we'll adopt it. I have to say, I thought the budget process went really well this year. Thought it was really smooth and not fraught with COVID-nineteen issues. So that was very refreshing, let me tell you. Staff was great to work with, city manager, budget committee was great, so thank you for that. We did meet two times with the budget committee after staff put together the proposed budget. And budget committee retained and deliberated on that budget. They made some amendments to the budget. And here is the approved budget that you all have in your packet. And you will see those amendments in there. And so this phase, of course, is hearing from the public if they wish to comment. And then, once we close public hearing, council can deliberate over the resolution if necessary. You do have options about changing the budget within the parameters that I laid out in the staff report. That's something we want to contemplate. And that, staff is recommending that you adopt Resolution twenty-one twenty. And the city budget includes total appropriations among all departments and funds totaling thirty million nine hundred and thirty-three thousand and three dollars for next year. And so with that. Any questions?
Questions? Okay, is there any member of the public wishing to comment on the approved budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two? Didn't have anybody listed, so. I'm seeing anybody. Okay, made our motion.
I move to approve Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty for the purpose of adopting the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget as approved, submitted, enacted upon by the Budget Committee of the City of Cannon Beach, making appropriations and living taxes for municipal purposes of the City of Cannon Beach for the fiscal year commencing July one, twenty twenty-one, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
And no further questions. So, Jen?
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel President Bennefield?
Yes.
Counsel Rizley?
Yes.
Counsel Obobie?
Yes.
Mayor Stoudt.
Yes.
Thank you to all our fellow Budget Committee members.
Yes, yes, did a great job. And it was Sharon's birthday, too.
She got a whole budget for her birthday.
And the chairmanship.
Yes.
I don't think she thought that would be present.
I don't think she could take home the gavel either.
Okay, our next item, oh, well, actually, we're going to close the special meeting. And we're going into report. Excuse me, I might be wrong here. Discussion items, yes. Session for discussion items, and the first item is fair tax update. Bruce?
Sir, um, the update is, we have scheduled the meetings. First meeting is Thursday, June tenth, at two o'clock. Next one is Wednesday, June sixteenth, at six P M. And then we have another one Saturday, June nineteenth, at ten A M. This has been, this is the poster, it's been posted in many locations on a website. And I don't believe that there were any updates as far as the ordinance. Was there anything new? Thoughts on that, Emily?
I know, I think we're waiting to edit more until we get some more feedback.
Okay, all right, good. And apparently, there was a meeting with the chamber and representatives from the Oregon Restaurant Lodging Association. So they had their conversations. And the first meeting with the restaurant folks is the one we're kind of setting aside on, on Thursday, June tenth, for them at two o'clock. But anybody is welcome to attend any meeting.
Now, these are virtual meetings, it says. Does that mean nobody is coming to the city hall?
We are close to opening city hall. We will have to do so and reduce capacity. The, there was a number that said that we, our occupancy was like ninety-six. Well, that assumes that none of us are up here. And so really, I asked the fire chief the other day to take a look and say, okay, we're just from that, that side over there because we're really not going to bring seats all the way up into here. And so the result was that occupancy is thirty-nine. And so while we're in fifty percent, we couldn't have up to, up to twenty percent of, or I'm sorry, twenty people to come in person. And we've been kind of waiting, but I think we probably have as much information as we're going to get in the governor's office as far as guidance. And so it'll be masks unless you have, you know, both of your vaccinations and then, you know.
So are you saying some people can come to the?
I, we probably should talk about it, go to the order if you want to talk about it now. I think that we're close to that point, to having people come in. So I think if we were to set a date, we could go ahead and start.
Okay, doesn't quite answer my question yet.
I'm sorry. Yes, no, we are. If you, if we wanted to, we could probably have people at the tenth or the sixteenth, or even. I don't think we have a meeting before the tenth.
Okay. So you're saying some people, if they want to come in, might be able to?
Let's give ourselves to the sixteen. Well, I mean, you asked me to make the decision right now. But if, I think that if we go till the sixteenth, we'll make sure we have everything that we need. And then we could probably have.
Problem with that is that the restaurant people have been encouraged to speak on the tenth. And I know that I've talked to a few of them that are looking very forward to being here. So I really think that we need to honor that. And if it takes a little more effort on our part to accommodate that, I think it's worth the effort.
Okay, and we did announce some Zoom meetings, but I think we can probably do it by the tenth.
And also, we said there would be five meetings, and we only scheduled three. So we still need two more to be scheduled.
I don't remember the five.
I do.
I think what we were talking about is how we did the Dune Management. And I think this one works better to run through the first two and maybe schedule more because we'll know more by the time we. I wouldn't say we're not having five. I would just say, yes, we're going to have five or unless there's nobody showing up anymore.
But you do remember us talking about five.
I don't remember the word five. I remember talking about it as if we were doing it like the Dune and that was five.
Yeah.
But.
I think in terms of doing it like the Dune, it was one meeting after another, after another, not necessarily we're going to, I mean, I don't mind if we have to do five, fine, but, but I, but I don't remember the number being five meetings.
I'm just, I'm just not comfortable right now scheduling that far out just because I, my schedule is so weird lately. We've got three dates. Let's at least get two under our belt. Then we'll schedule more if we need them.
Actually, got three coming up.
I know. But let's get two under our belts and then we can, on the second one, we could start scheduling the fourth one and go on and on if we need to.
I think it's going to really be determined by how much interest there is and how much participation people.
Yeah. And I think also, I, I don't mind if somebody wants to come on Thursday and be here, just as long as everybody knows we are very limited on how many can sit in the room and stay and listen. Those restaurateurs who want to be here on Thursday but don't have the ability to Zoom or anything like that, they're also welcome to the other two meetings that were scheduled. So, and by then, maybe we'll have in person. So, but again, I'm, I'm okay with it if they want to come and speak. Again, we got to post our numbers, how many we can have out in the room at any one time. Get that.
And the number gets lower if we have anybody coming in with a mask because they have to be, you know, separated. It's not just one seat for two on either side. So it'll depend on who shows up. We'll monitor it and at some point we'll just say that, you know, we've read our capacity.
We have, we will have a card trick or if we have to.
Okay. Ms. Meredith, you know, a problem, you and I talked about this already, but when we talk about matching the Dune program, you remember, we spent one whole meeting, the first meeting, talking about science and policy. And I don't know, I mean, we're clearly not doing that because our first meeting is kind of set for the restaurateurs. Do you want a short presentation of some kind or just start right with comment? Because it really is a little different process that, you know, we're comparing it to.
I think we need a short presentation just to kind of set the table and say, this is what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Then staff will try to, to put that together. We'll send it out to you to review. Anybody has any comments or something they say we want to add or whatever? And we will try to accommodate that. And then there will be a short presentation at the beginning of the meeting. And depending on how well it works, we'll do it at the next several. But, okay, that's, that's what I needed to know. Are we going to have that policy, whatever part?
I think you should include the fire chief as well.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
Okay. Did everybody so far for the update? Okay, our next item then is an update for the TSP. Is Jeff available?
Actually, sorry, it's the packet, the next item is the ECFR, but we didn't have a staff report for the ECFR yet when the packet was put out.
Okay.
So we need to have the ECFR first and then the TSP.
Where is he?
The ECFR one came out this morning. When I sent the email out, I posted it under additional documents.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and start it. There was on two parts that, one is that we've been trying to get somebody to come and talk to us about fish. And Jen, is the person that you were able to line up on, online?
It's Troy Laws.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so we do have somebody and that was at the request of Robin Rizley. And so I don't know if you want to introduce the subject.
Well, yes, please. I would.
If I can just finish, so everybody knows what the second one is. Jelaine sent us something and saying that there was a Scrivener's error in the report.
Right.
And so if you all would approve that change, I don't have the specifics on it, but that was the second thing. So I'm sorry, Robin, please go ahead.
That's okay. I spoke to Chris Knutson last Friday and he agreed that it would be important for ODFW to make a formal comment in regards to the fish and wildlife protection as this proposal goes to OWEB. He said that he would have Robert Bradley and Troy Laws speak about spawning counts and what we had had in the packet, our previous packet that had been done by Scott Kirby. So I'm really looking forward to hearing what Troy has to say. And I'd love if he would explain the spawning count and what those mean. And also if there is actually a juvenile salmon count as well. Because I think it isn't just creating the eggs in the spawning area. It's also what the result of that is. So I hope that he can shed some light on that as well.
Okay.
And also how it might pertain to expanding the lower road B. I know that there's an issue with the power company, but they already have access through road A and Greenwood. So this is an area that I'm hoping we can really think hard about expanding.
Hi Troy.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
I can.
Great. Okay. I think my computer cut out while you were giving the intro to this section. So I only heard parts of it, but if I understand correctly, speak about the fish and, and, and the other wildlife issues I associate with reopening that road into the reserve. Is that correct?
Well, also the spawning count that Scott Kirby did, what that actually meant, the form that we all received and then how it would affect the juvenile salmon as well, what their counts were.
Okay. Well, I can touch on that first if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Okay. Those adult spawning counts that you were given or collected over the course of the spawning season for Coho salmon, those counts just represent the adult returns for that reach of the system. It's not the entire system. So there's a starting point and an ending point. And that survey is walked every other week through the spawning period. And they use that data to get an index for coastwide. It actually applies, is applicable coastwide to the, the whole coastal return. They look at the various streams up and down the coast and try to get an index for the total returns for the state. As it relates to the Cola Creek system in, in of itself, and those are, it's just a snapshot picture, if you will, of the adults that returned for this year. Those counts vary. That particular survey, if I understand correctly, is not done every year. It's on a rotational basis. And so we do have surveys in various streams up and down the coast that are surveyed every year. And those are used, those counts are used a little bit differently. But anyway, the counts that you saw as they relate to the total return this year, overall, the, the Coho return was, was down from abundance wise. The salmon that did spawn in there, the juveniles are more of an indication of the health of the system. And so I would say that, you know, if you really want to handle on how well Ecola Creek is performing, you really need to look at the juveniles that are rearing in there and at what abundance they are. Because a low, a low adult return in a system that's at capacity can produce as many juveniles as a high adult return. So really, habitat can be the limiting factor for how much production is occurring in the system. With that.
Did you have that count?
We, we are not in there currently assessing the juvenile production. Steve Trask did some of that type of assessment work for you before the observe, the reserve was acquired. And I would recommend that he come back or another firm, whoever, come back in and look at juvenile production. But it can certainly be related to the habitat work we did in there a few years ago when we put the large wood into the stream in there. Any? Is there any other thoughts or questions on that?
Question.
Troy, you said that the adult count was down, but compared to what?
Just compared coastwide to the returns in ocean production and harvest, all the factors that the department looks at. But it certainly wasn't a high return year for Coho this year.
So down compared to other years? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. And it varies widely between years. Some systems can come back depending on how hard those stocks are hit in the ocean and other factors that drive those numbers and what we see in the returns. But ocean productivity has a lot to do with the adult returns we see in these coastal systems. What we really need to focus on though is how well that system is producing in relation to the returns that it does receive. Because certainly if the habitat's not being fully seeded, we're missing opportunity there to get more production and more juveniles going into the ocean. And of course, we all like to see robust adult returns.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're, we're looking at an area around the Volmer Road culvert. I guess there's a culvert down there or was. Where the, it's very, I guess, the, it's very curvy down there. And Steve, do you know, would, would, if, if we did something there to improve the road, would that affect the count at all? Do you, can you tell us anything about that?
Roads in of themselves can be problematic for fish and habitat. And it all relates to delivery of sediments and pollutants and that to the stream course. Roads, when they are restored or reopened or new roads constructed, they have to follow standards as set. In this case, it would probably fall under the Forest Practices Act. But the county standards may well as, may as well apply. Anytime you cross a stream and if it's a fish bearing stream, the state, the fish and wildlife has fish passage standards that have to be met. And there's both state and federal standards. So if you, you are going to go in and reopen this road and you're going to do any work associated with any stream crossing, that question has to be answered as to whether or not the passage, whether it be a culvert or a bridge or, or whatever, how, you know, it would need to meet the standards for current fish passage.
That'll all come out in the permit documents.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
You bet.
And you were proposing that we should get some counts for juvenile to really see what the true picture is, correct?
Yeah, it'd be interesting because Steve Trask went in and collected data before we did any of the enhancement work in there. And it would be great to be able to go back in and see if productivity in those same areas has improved for juveniles.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Yes, thanks Troy for enlightening us on stuff. So, okay.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
Okay. As far as fire risk goes, I was talking to Lolly over the weekend and she's finding quite a few cigarette butts in the reserve. And so there are people that are going in and smoking, obviously. And so I was wondering if there's a way we could post no smoking signs whenever the weather gets to the point that, I know we can close the reserve, but I also thought if we could post something that would remind people not to smoke when they're in there, that it might be a good idea.
We can, we can do that. And especially with the, you know, current drought.
Yeah.
And my suggestion is we don't do it only when things are dry because otherwise we're saying we can smoke sometimes, but not, I think, just not.
And can we legally do that?
I'll check, but I'm pretty sure we can.
It's our property.
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
Yeah.
That'd be wonderful.
Lolly gets around.
Well, it's kind of up where she lives, so.
I know, no.
She may be there more than a lot of others.
Yeah.
Okay, now shall we go to the TSP update?
Yes, we do.
Hello?
Jeff?
Hey. Mayor, Council, thank you for giving me just a chance to update you on the TSP, Cannon Beach TSP. We had our live webinar open house last week and I, I just want to get the word out and I'm, ask Rusty to kind of share the screen and he's going to do it. But if you go to cannonbeachts.com, this is what you'll see. And if you click on the survey banner there, it takes you to a information, which is really the same information that was at the webinar, but it's an interactive, open house, online webinar. And Rusty, if you scroll down just a little bit, you'll see these, welcome, one, two, three, four, and five. And if you click number four there on the feedback, just up above on that banner, yep. That takes you immediately to the survey. And so we would love to have as many of our citizens, visitors, anyone that has to deal with our transportation system, has parking issues or loves our parking system or trail system or biking and hiking, anything to do with transportation, please, this is your opportunity to get involved. You can also, that Cannon Beach TSP website, you can sign up for our mailing list and we'll get you the next dates when hopefully we'll be doing in-person meetings at the next one in August. And so really looking forward to getting some public input on this and getting the word out. We've scheduled it through the 18th, but I think we're going to keep this survey open longer and have some follow-up surveys as well as part of this. And I just wanted to update you guys on that and, and let you know that this is available. And we're already getting some good input. We'll have some articles in the newspapers and getting the words out through all of our different outlets. Thanks, Rusty.
Oh.
Jeff, when we get the report from, on the TSP, whenever that is, will there be any discussion about paid parking in it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So it's, well, what's going to be is, they'll, they'll come up with different scenarios. So different parking management solutions. There was quite a bit of conversation at the webinar, at the online webinar about different parking alternatives. But they're also looking right now at that from traffic, from traffic counts and parking counts to parking utilization. So all of that's going to feed into it. Plus, like I said, people's comments on the survey. And then the next step, of course, is we'll gather all of this data, look at our existing conditions. And then some different scenarios will develop out of that. And yes, all of those different conversations about, you know, should we have paid parking? Should we have some other type of management system? You know, people were talking about ones in different communities that have either parking stickers or that you pay for a full day pass. So we're going to, they're going to investigate all of those and then we'll get to kind of have those discussions or, and city council can decide on what they want to, where they want to go from there.
All right, thank you.
Jeff, when you were talking the other day and I listened to it three times because I was concerned that you were talking about gravel. I was concerned that you were talking about gravel as being a priority. And it bothered me because I think it conflicts with the village character. And I just wanted to find out if you feel that that is the highest priority is to get rid of gravel?
No, I don't think we're setting any priorities right now, Rob. And I was conveying what people concern in the public voice to me, so I have no preference. Honestly, I want everyone out there and everyone that in the city to give us their feedback. This is a listening opportunity. And so I was passing along to the consultants who's gathering this data, some of those things that I hear and some of those things that are passed along to me. But no, I gravel paved whatever the community wants. That's what we want. Okay? So that's, that's what the phase we're in right now is just listening, gathering the data. That's why I just say Cannon Beach TSP.com and fill out the survey. And that's how, that's how we're going to get that data and start talking about you know, where you want to go from here.
I also noticed who was on the committee and I've noticed three people are on for Title VI. Can you explain that?
Yes, Title VI is trying to reach those community that are often not at the tables of these kind of decisions, Hispanic, disabled, those type of communities that aren't often on boards or committees. And so it's trying to find someone who can connect with those communities and, and I'm really hope open to anyone else that you guys may know in the community that can help us reach those. But we think we have some good, good members that can help us reach those communities.
Yeah, it looks like a really good group. The one thing though, that I was concerned about is and I think Les Sinclair is a wonderful person to have as a Cannon Beach community member. But there's only one listed and I think there should be a couple more community members on there because I felt that was lacking the chamber actually, even though Jim Pano is the chamber exec, you have Greg Swedenborg as a local business owner, but he actually is also president of the chamber. So I'm just thinking to get a better balance of people who have been here for a long time and want to put their input in as well.
You're bored me. Anyone you would suggest?
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else?
No, thanks, Jeff.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
I actually have one question and that's for Rusty. I like that format. Can we use that for other topics?
Or Jeff's?
Yeah, the survey and website page thing.
We can. That's something that Jeff built completely on his own. Yes, we can do similar things.
Okay, just curious. Okay, next item is somewhere down here. Okay. Fourth of July parade update, Fourth of July.
I have no parade update.
No parade.
No.
So we're looking forward to a busy weekend. And we've already put together our staffing plan and operations plan for the July. So we'll start. The staffing changes will start on the second, which is that Friday, and it's going to be a busy three-day weekend. So all hands on deck.
Did you decide if you needed the surf team for Friday also?
Well, if we could, yeah.
Okay.
Certainly will. Help for spotters, I think, all three days. And so with that, it ends up about 50 hours of overtime with the officers. We talked about today in our department meeting and I think we've got the scheduling done right. I think we're prepared for plenty of crews for the beach east with what we have, work with what we have. I've been communicating with the sheriff's office and they said, good luck. Busy as well. And that's understandable, but I did advise them of the issues up on top of Sunset that are in the county there that we do get issues from as well. And so they'll do their best to have someone there as well as Arch Cape. And then the issues with Crescent Beach, working with State Parks. And so I have talked with Justin Burke with State Parks. And he says he'll do what he can. He'd love to throw somebody, but he would love to do that all the time and he just doesn't have the manpower as well. So I Ryan Wagner, we had from Oregon State Parks and Wildlife. They're responsible for Haystack Rock and he will be here in the evenings just to stand by at the rock and help us there. So that will be just be a busy time, you know, and we talked about it today in our meeting that we're going to do the best we can with officers down on the beach. It'll be hard to race up for the other fireworks that are going off in town and going back and forth. So we'll figure out what works best. I think the weekend will be busy. One great help has been Deb Atia. And she has a fireworks plan and she's been a great help with working with the media and talking with different people, but also doing Facebook blasts, which makes it a lot easier on us hitting places that we don't hit, including the KGW and OPB. In fact, she included me in an email conversation with Grant McCombe and trying to get him to do a story on the rock and the different animals there, which would be fun. Because I've always been a Grant McCombe fan. But you know, I think we're doing everything we possibly can. We're going to try to get some radio ads out as well and trying to hit media in places like Washington. Was looking forward to the fact that Seaside might have a show and when they decided they weren't going to. So Astoria is the only show in our area that we'll all be sending everybody to, but we do have the signs with ODOT. I think we have them the Wednesday before. So we'll have them for both ends of the city. And if they're not able to give us theirs, we have other ones set up as well through United Rentals. So we'll definitely have the notifications and educations out and the officers have been hitting it hard. There was one the other night, I think Nancy and I had talked about last weekend. And it was somebody had gotten a video of it. Of course, they heard it, but didn't know where it came from. And somebody had gotten a video to the officers, but it wasn't couldn't tell who had set it off. And it ended up being 35 people in a vacation rental. And nobody claimed to have set it off, but they were all set off by the time the officers had gotten a complaint and got on scene. So they're doing the best they can. They're working on the lanterns as well. They had one a few weeks ago of the lanterns that were set off. And those are all just major concerns with fire damage. And so hopefully it pours down all weekend. Or we get snow. I think both are very likely. But no, I think we're prepared and everybody's on the same page. They know what their mission is and they know what you guys would like from them. So we're ready to move forward.
And Lolly had signs that people could put in their yards, right?
Yes, that is Deb working with.
Lynn Sinclair's.
Yeah. And I think they're working on 300 signs and part of them say no littering. And then the other side talks about the fireworks. So that would be great as well, you know, the more information we can get, but also working with certain members as spotters and trying to get everybody else indoors before it gets dark. So they're not part of the problem.
I think with the signs, I was talking to Lynn, they were talking about putting like one or two at any, any place you could walk down to the beach. So like one of the last things you see before you step onto the beach, but not a wall, but just like maybe one or two at each location. So it's kind of like constant reminders as opposed to a big picket sign, you know, picket fence at the corner to look.
I will happily tell Mayor Jones that we're sending everybody his way.
The what?
We're sending everybody his way.
Yes.
Could any of the signs be in Spanish?
I'm sure they could, yeah.
That'd be a good idea.
I'd ask Lynn because I think she's, she ordered them. She said they were supposed to be here the sixth, but now they're not going to be here until the ninth. I guess that would be tomorrow. And I don't know if she's ordering anymore or not.
Okay, good job.
Yes.
You're on top of that.
I'm like, you're in my mind. We'll see what you say on the fifth.
Yeah, I won't tell them until the third. Okay, next item is parking management permission request. Bruce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a program that was instituted quite a while ago and it allows people to don't have onsite parking to pay a fee so that they get a credit in the parking lot that is downtown. And we'd heard from Chip McGregor and he said, you know, he's one of the people and probably one of the ones that has a more spaces than average. And said, is this something that can be waived for the downtown vendors so that because they've been out, you know, so much at 50% or whatever. And so we pass this information around and Robin had asked to put on the, on the meeting today. And Rob, do you have any questions or anything we can help with on the answer?
Well, I was just curious about how many with our outdoor seating, how many spots are taken up with that? And does that impede maybe some of what people think they're buying into? Do you know what I'm saying?
The ones that are there, for example, and I'm hoping to get you, I'm understanding your question, but like Ecola Seafood, they have onsite park and that's where they're putting their, their folks. Now, that means they're transferring just to another location, but they are using at our approval that that additional seating. Same thing with the Driftwood. We don't have anybody yet that's come up and asked for one of those parklets or whatever you call it, where you take up a couple of parking places. We've made that available, but no one has asked to take that. So I don't know if there's any, we've lost any spaces as a result. I'm sorry, public parking places as a result of people putting things within their own property. But it is, we can assume that people that would have parked there now have to go someplace else. And so that might add to the count some.
Well, and, and like the Driftwood where people who were the, their customers now are having to find another place to park. So I think they're, and with Ecola, McGregor is right next door. And are they thinking that the parking that's being used by Cola is, or are they using it too?
No, no, we, we suggested, but I don't think that that ever came to fruition as far as, and we were talking more from the seating side. Chip McGregor was one of the people that initially asked about a parklet, you know, upfront, but it didn't appear to be viable. So
Chip's on the call for more.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Chip, if you're here, you can go ahead and speak. Ready for that?
Sure.
Chip?
Hi, sorry for the delay there.
Go ahead. Chip, I don't know if you're listening, we just kind of did a walkthrough about what we, our conversation, but please feel free to add anything you wish.
I, I don't know. I assume this got conveyed to everybody on the city council. Yeah, you know, we we stepped in, I've had the bar there for a couple of years, but we stepped in last fall after Tom Morris was not able to come back from after the COVID. And, and what I was trying to convey was just I, I received a bill for $1,700, which I'd never seen before and was told that it's almost a year late. And of course, it's like, well, I'm sorry, I didn't know anything about it. And so I was asking if this could be waived or reduced. And I will step in, I don't own the building, but it's just that, you know, we lost about $40,000. So, you know, being closed for the last year and a half and we're just looking, you know, and people have been generous and customers have come back and we obviously love the space. So we were just trying to find, we could, we're just trying to find out if there could be some consideration. I'm sorry, everybody else who has spoken has clearly had a script in front of them and I didn't realize I should have, I should have created a script, really well. Next time, however, I'll do it in three acts and we'll have like an opening dance sequence and an overture.
You're doing fine. Fine. I need a script. This is a, this is a one-time ask for the COVID, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
When you say there have been people, Chip is right, and we told him we'll hold off until we get the answer as far as paying, but there are people that are current. And then, so I think that anything we do, we need to kind of sort through how the whole thing works. And I think that the total collection is just over 38,000.
So to be fair, we'd have to reduce it for the total.
I would, I would suggest.
And that would be for, in his case, past due and in many cases, present due, whatever, or current.
I think, I think that's what Chip is asking. I don't know what the, what last year's, how much of that was, you know, covered by COVID. But, but he has two years that he would be dealing with.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Any other comments on this?
Well, you only took up the full restaurant when?
I should know that right off the top of my head. October, I think.
Yeah.
So that's pretty late in the year, correct?
Yeah, but the, the fact is the building owes it because the building can have 14 places, but they need to keep that payment up. Not just when it's occupied or not.
And again, I, I'm sorry, this is, when I got the bill last week is first I'd heard about this particular.
Yeah.
So the 1,700 is for last year. Right?
Right.
Yes, that was for July 2020.
So it would be from, from July 1st to June 30, what, 30, 30th, July 1st of 2019, July to June 30th of 2020. So it, he shouldn't even, he should just give it to the current year. He should give it to the previous owner.
Well, and, and you did have the bar, so you had a percentage of the building. Yeah. So maybe that seems fair as that a percentage up until when it became.
Yeah, that, the concern I have is it's a legitimate ask for one restaurant.
Yes.
But in order to be fair to all the other restaurants who've already paid it.
Right.
We need to consider, do we refund them an equal amount?
I don't think that's quite the question because none of the other restaurants had a change of management. So the other ones understood that there was, oh, okay. Well, maybe in that case, that, that should be.
Why isn't this the responsibility of the owner of the building?
Of the previous owner.
Rather than tenant.
It depends on how the lease is written. And it turns out that apparently that this is one that would fall to the tenant. But one thing I want to point out is that these are very, that it's a very valuable thing to to not have to put parking on your property and have it be someplace else. And so I think if we want to waive it for a period, you know, that's, that's fine, but I would be careful about. But I would be careful about, well, you weren't in the building for this period or something. Well, you still had the spaces and we still had the expense. So I would be careful about, um, you know, tying it somehow to whether or not you moved or not.
Well, many businesses couldn't even be in business without this provision.
Yeah, it's one.
But by code, they need to provide so many onsite building or parking spaces.
Yes.
So some years back, the city came up with this mechanism to allow them to operate the business and still comply with parking requirements.
Yes.
Whether it's the tenant's responsibility or the landlord's, I guess that depends on their lease agreement.
I think ultimately it is the property owner.
But it is a valuable
Yeah.
service, allowing them to park elsewhere.
Yeah. I don't think this building, or the, the business could be viable without these 14 spaces. So
Couldn't be.
Yeah.
All right.
I just wanted to clarify, the fee is for, uh, the current fiscal year. July 1, 2020 through June 30, 21.
Okay.
And we're
Didn't he say he had two bills, one for the previous and then one was for this one?
The only outstanding amount is for the current fiscal year.
Okay, so then
And then we will bill again on July 1, 2021, for our next fiscal year.
So this goes, so this goes from, uh, July 1st of 2020 to June 30th of this year?
Correct.
Okay, and so during that time, he was in business from October. So there were, uh, there's an amount of what, four months from July to October that he wasn't in business that he's being billed for? Three months, I guess.
Um, something I think that it helped the discussion is to, uh, point out that there's only a certain segment of the businesses in town that actually pay into this.
Yes.
And that, um, plan or program, I don't know how you would like to characterize it, has since stopped. Am I incorrect?
No new people, um, as far as I know.
Yes.
And we have had a request, for example, I think of the Kitchop on Spruce. Um, they're having trouble meeting the requirement for what they want to put in there, and we don't have anything that we can convey through this program.
Otherwise, you're overbooking parking spaces.
I'd say we've already done just that.
Yeah.
I think if we were to go ahead and add them up, we got more than what's
This has been discussed before, what to do with this program. I'd kind of like to use this conversation as a jumping off point for just that. I think there's some things that we could definitely discuss about it. I'm not sure I, maybe we're making a, do we need a decision right now about the, the parking's part relief?
No, I think
This is a long session, isn't, am I correct?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, are we making a council decision about
No, I don't
Specific to the case?
No, sorry, I don't think that you can, but it would be something that we would forward to, um, the July meeting. If you were to make, if you were to make any decisions, we would frame it in a resolution or whatever. And then move forward with it.
Well, and I know this is a special issue, but when you read, um, about the requirements, it talks about the planning commission, uh, and having them, uh, be the ones to look at this. And, um, I can't recall when a planning commission last looked at this as a, um, do you recall?
I do not.
I think there was a date in, in it, I think it was like
I think
Six or something.
If we're talking about a, uh, changing or allowing a percentage deduction or, uh, relieving down from payment for, um, a term, uh, whatever, that's our decision. If we're changing the ordinance or talking about how we want to proceed with the, um, any sort of discussion on this, I agree, we need to ask the planning commission to weigh in on it. But I think, you know, in this case, the specific case that we're faced right now with Chip, that's our decision.
Yeah.
I am, I'm, I'm concerned about making any sort, this is my, my take, concerned about making any sort of, uh, allowance, singularly without opening the can of worms, that everybody else is going to then say, oh, hey, my turn, I want, uh, deduction of some type. So my sense on this is if we give some sort of allowance, we have to then give same quarter to, um, future payments, since most of the folks have already paid. That's my assumption. That said, I have no problem with postponing, uh, this one case for a payment somewhere down the road if you can't pay it at this moment. But that's, again, that's my, my take on it.
Is there a penalty associated with late payment?
All right.
You know?
I don't think our current ordinance or resolution allows for that.
Okay, so, so So there wouldn't be any harm in allowing a, a postponement now that things are back running at a little higher level.
Yeah.
To, uh, catch a breath and schedule those payments, um, through the summer, say. He's going to have another one just like it for this summer. So it's not a relief, uh, of obligation, but it says, you get time to generate the revenue.
That would be nice. Uh, there's nothing in my lease about this, by the way, and just so that you know. And I'm, no criticism intended, I just, uh, I was told that if I didn't pay, that there was going to be a fine associated, and it's like, I didn't know about it, and another one is coming in a couple of weeks, so.
Yeah, well.
When Chip and I talk about it, the most important thing is don't do anything that would allow you to lose those spaces.
Yeah.
That's the most important thing.
Well, if there isn't really a fine, then, um, I have no problem with just extending it. And that can be done, uh, in staff level, we don't really have to make an ordinance on that or a resolution.
Or you could even put him on a, a payment plan of some kind.
Yeah, that work, chop it up into months.
Yeah.
Something like that. And that would help.
Through the summer, yeah.
Does that make sense, Chip?
Uh, it does. Uh, I have asked to the, Tom Morris, the owner, uh, about this, and, uh, he, you know, Tom has been sick, uh, but he did, he did send me a text saying, uh, he was in discussion, uh, with, uh, I'm sorry, I don't have my cell phone here, so I can't tell you, but he was in discussion with someone about the fact that he was, uh, uh, challenging the requirement to pay this fine. But again, I didn't know any of that. I didn't know any of that until last week, when I got this bill, and I was like, I don't know what this is, so, uh, yeah.
Okay, well
So you'd like us to work, Tom, or I'm sorry, with Chip, on a timeframe?
Yeah.
And then next year is due when it's due? Okay, so, but just this one year can be, we'll sort it out. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, Chip, we'll start with you.
All right, thanks.
A, Laurie's turn, financial report, third quarter. Pardon? Just, oh, it's a short break, Laurie.
Sometimes I feel like you got Solomon.
Okay, hello again. I think you have the, uh, January through March 2021, uh, financial report. For year-to-date balances, uh, nine months. So, um, revenues and expenses should track at 75%. Uh, you'll see our cash position is very favorable. Nine million at March 31, 2021. Uh, compared to prior year, March 31, 2020, a 7.5 million. Obviously, I've said this before, the reason it's, um, so much higher is because we conservatively estimated our beginning fund balances at July 1. Uh, they came in much higher than we thought at the time. And our revenues are up, uh, more than we anticipated, so that's causing that to happen. So as I look through the report, um, general fund revenues, uh, are 67.1%. It's not hitting 75%, and that's because of the timing of revenues that come in. Uh, a lot of these revenues that year end, um, the cash is collected in July and August, but the revenue is earned prior to June 30. So we record those entries into this current fiscal year. And we don't see those here, because we don't know what they are until July and August. And when you get your June 30 report from me, uh, you'll see those reflected there. And so, uh, the revenues will be, um, much higher, uh, and maybe over budget.
I suspect they will.
On the expenditure side and the general fund, uh, those are looking good, all are under 75%. Um, we did make some budget adjustments to the general fund this year, quite a few actually, more than the norm. And I think that was just because of our budgeting and being too conservative. Um, so that's looking good. Um, fund ballot, our beginning fund balance, uh, has increased for the three quarters by 489,635. So that's good. Um, if we look at the other funds on page four, you'll see, um, tourism and arts fund is right on track. Uh, our transient room tax fund, uh, you'll see that there's, uh, line five program expenses is at 91%, which, uh, we remedied that with a budget adjustment this year. We did it after March 31, so it's not reflected, but it will be reflected in the June 30. So you'll see that increase, uh, budget amount in there. So I think we're covered there sufficiently. Uh, not much to report in the county TRT fund. Uh, expenses are under budget. Uh, revenues are at 70%. We're expecting another payment from the county in July. And that revenue stream will be reflected in our June 30 statements. The building official fund, also, again, our program expenses are more than 75% at this point. But if you recall, we did a budget adjustment here as well. So that will, um, even out at June 30. Army Park is good. Revenues are coming in well from the, um, rentals there. Get me every time. Um, page five. These funds look great. Revenues are coming in. Expenditures are less than 75%. I don't see anything alarming there. Uh, page six, you can see kind of what I was talking about earlier with cash. Uh, if you look at, um, that bottom chart on line one, we actually had 1.3 million in ending fund balance, more than what we budgeted, so. That is favorable to the city. On page seven, page six. Page seven is our overall room tax collections. You can see we're doing very well. We're over budget. So, um, you look and compare line two to line four, you get a better comparison, because 2019 was a normal year, 2020 wasn't. So I went back and looked at that, and, uh, we're up 8% from the year 2019 in collections in 2021. So you can see line two is 2.1 million. And in 19, 2019, it was 1.9 million, so, um, that's an 8% increase over that normal year. And so we have the same thing in quarter two and quarter three. We're up 135,000 from 2019, and in quarter three, we're up 233,000 from 2019. So, um, we're doing really well with our, um, room tax revenue stream. And page eight is tourism and arts. Uh, we have some people, uh, returning funds to us. Uh, we did get money from Get Lit, and so that's, um, adding additional funds to the ending fund. And so that's adding additional funds to the ending fund balance. Nine is how we're doing compared to the budget in each of the, um, general fund, tap and transient room tax that collects the room tax. And did you have any questions? I think I've reached the last page of my report. I feel really good about, uh, what I'm seeing here. Make those budget amendments that will fix any of the problems that we've.
Laurie, has anybody, uh, have, have any contractors or builders, uh, money from the affordable fund?
No, no, we haven't spent any money there, which brings me to say that, um, we will be issuing those refunds on those overcharged customers.
Is that the eighty-nine thousand in expenses that you?
Well, no, those were just normal. We thought, well, there was builder incentive budgeted in that number.
Mm hmm.
Um, what's going to happen is, um, there's about seventy thousand dollars, uh, that we have to refund. And so that's going to be taking up that budget, that spending authority there. And so we charged the construction excise tax, um, incorrectly. And we've identified the customers and we're going to try to get those refunds out to everybody who's entitled to them. We're having some difficulty because, uh, this happened two, two and a half years ago. And so some people have moved on and we may or may not be able to find a good address for them. We are taking every step that we can think of. Um, I consulted with Ashley on this and we just have to do the best job we can trying to track people down. And if we cannot do that, um, we're probably, you know, we'll just have a few, uh, permits set aside in case somebody calls us or, you know, figures out that they were incorrectly charged. And so the residential permits are easier than the, uh, construction or commercial ones, but we're going to do our best to get the money back to everyone.
But nobody has, nobody has said, hey, I'm going to build affordable housing, so therefore I'm entitled to funds from the Affordable Housing Fund.
They probably would contact Jeff for that, and I haven't heard anything. So Jeff hasn't said anything to me about that.
Any questions? Thank you, Laurie.
Thank you.
Good report.
Good job, Laurie, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, that ends our agenda. So anything for, for the order or counselor contacts or?
I'm kicking myself for not thinking of something.
I have just a, a question that came up when I was talking to some folks or trying to riff. Um, the, uh, he mentioned that the grant for the cash sites came through. Uh, but you sent us an email about it being, the total being short. Can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, what happened is that, um, I think, uh, obviously it would be a very busy time for the legislature and they were going through all the applications and everything. And so there was an amount that was set and they kind of just picked projects out that they thought would be about that total, but it was really off by about two hundred thousand dollars. The other thing is that, um, I want to have a conversation with, um, Representative Weber because, uh, if we weren't going to have everything funded, the projects that they selected would not be the ones that we should, we would do first. So we want to see if there's flexibility in that. You know, to do certain, some of the generators, for example, the Matanuska generator, uh, we've got a approval to do that. It was a two-year approval and we're almost at the end of that. And we don't want to put the roof on until we have the generator. And so, uh, but that's not on that list, but other generators are. So we just wanted to see if we could go ahead and move those around. So, uh, one of the projects that was listed was the cash sites. Um, and I don't know, uh, I've only talked to Karen so far, but how, where the whole thing fits in.
Okay, now, my understanding is we originally budgeted those as normal, uh, city projects, didn't we?
Yes.
So what we've got is some free money kind of stuffed in there. So we would still be paying for these projects if we didn't get that money. They just, because they were shovel-ready, we just used them.
This list? Well, for example, the Matanuska is shovel-ready, but it wasn't included on the list.
I see.
So we just need to take a look at it and, and kind of prioritize. Um, Matanuska was also going to be a loan. So, I mean, I'm sorry, I don't think it was, yeah, I think. We told you that there were at least three generators that were, that were possibly going to be funded by, uh, FEMA. And that was supposed to be decided like, uh, May or June. Now we found that's out till August. And we really don't want to wait until August to do Matanuska, you know, however long it would take FEMA to get us those generators or the money for them. So we just have to jumble, you know, with what we've got. And, uh, we're very appreciative of what, um, Representative Weber was able to pull together, but, um, we just got to ask if there's, uh, uh, consideration for allowing us to do some move around.
Okay. All I wanted to know. Any else?
Okay, then. Sam, just a, um, staff, if I make a recommendation on, you, you know what the priority would be, we'll bring that to council for your review.
Okay. Okay, then, I guess we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.